Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I will be chairing the Planning Board meeting this evening, May 9th, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:34 PM. I'd like a roll call, please.
Carol Hofstas, present.
Ian Ortiz, present.
Mike Verosco, present.
And Laura Schifrin, present. If we would all stand and recite the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank all of our veterans, both present and on Zoom. Thank you for your service. Our meeting this evening is being recorded and will appear on Channel 9 and YouTube sometime after tomorrow. Has Robert joined us yet? I will skip 1.4 at this moment and I will skip 1.5 at this moment. For chairman's additions, deletions to the agenda unforeseen prior to 48 hours of this meeting, I would like to appoint Ian Ortiz, our affiliate, as a sitting member and voting member this evening. I would like to also take out of order from our work session 3.2, the Townsend Master Plan update. As of today, the only information that I have from Beth is that myself and Julie Byers, who was on our previous board, were the only ones who sent some edits or comments regarding the master plan as it was presented to the planning board. It was the previous board, previous full board, that had agreed to meet in work session and also agreed that they were not accepting the full plan as presented from the master plan committee, but would do some edits and then hopefully have a plan that they can move forward to the Board of Selectmen.
Laurie?
Yes?
I did send edits and comments to Beth for the two sections that I did on the master plan.
Okay, I thought that you had. I did not see them today, so forgive me.
Okay, yeah, she had posted them on that site a while ago.
Okay, I looked in the port hole this afternoon, but I didn't see them. So here's what I'd like to do if the board is in agreement. I would like to, if it's available, post for a work session for the master plan only. For the planning board, it can be public and we'll welcome others to join us and make comments. But I think we need a session just for this so that we have something that we can then present to the Board of Selectmen and this begin to move forward. Because it is a holdup in other things that we may want to do, especially with grants that we apply for. If the board is in agreement with that, I would like a motion for us to meet if available. And Beth, you can tell me, or TCAM rep, if you can tell me, if next Monday, the 16th, at, why don't we say maybe 7:00 PM, would be available so that we can have, you know, a one to two hour meeting. And if we have a posted meeting, okay. Mike, I see your hand, so...
I just wanted to let you know that the Open Space Committee is meeting next Monday at that time. And we will even be stealing one of your Planning Board members for that Open Space meeting, so I'm not sure that time is available for you.
Okay, thank you for letting me know that.
Yeah.
Laurie?
Yes?
Hi, this is Kim Craven from the Master Plan Committee. As we discussed at our last meeting, the planning board was given every chapter before the document was completed. You were provided every opportunity to give input. As we discussed last time, the planning, the master plan committee submitted a report to you. When a committee submits the report, you really shouldn't be changing it. We talked about the addendum process and I provided Beth many examples. You have to remember that a master plan is created by a committee with a point in time. You can't go about changing the recommendations that are the recommendations of the master plan committee. They don't all have to be implemented. Some might be, some might not be. But the whole purpose of a committee is to create a plan to give to the planning board. We included you, as I've stated, in every step of the way. You received every chapter. So the plan that was provided was on behalf of the committee. If you would like to create addendums, that would be great. It would make it a living document. But you can't ask a group of volunteers to move forward with presenting the plan and then changing it to suit your needs. If you want to update numbers, which will be ever-changing, that would be appropriate in an addendum or an appendix. And I sent Beth many examples of how that was done.
Thank you for your comments, Kim. From the board members, what would be your desire? I do know that this was discussed at our last meeting and I know what the board had decided to go into a work session for it. So we will discuss it in a work session and we will post it. Board members, may I hear from you, please?
Laurie, you're doing a really good job at making it so people don't want to volunteer. People spent a lot of time in town money hiring expert consultants to come up with that plan.
Kim, we...
But you are rejecting it.
I'm sorry, but I heard your comments. The board heard your comments at the last meeting. They wanted to go into a work session. I'm trying to carry this forward. I was not the chairman at the last meeting. I am trying to carry forward what was in the last meeting. Thank you for your comments. I'd like to hear from a board member now.
Laurie, I wasn't at the last meeting, sorry. I was going on business. I'm sorry, I don't want to comment on what was there because I haven't had a chance to watch the recording. I was trying to watch it today and it just, it didn't work out with my schedule, unfortunately. Was Carol there or Ian there potentially, or even Julie?
Yes, they were.
Yes. Thought we were just supposed to each take a section or two sections and go through it and edit it as needed or make comments as needed. And then I thought we were going to...
Which was what you did during the entire process. You were given every opportunity to comment. And you didn't even have the courtesy to let the planning board or the master plan committee know that once again you want to change the plan that was provided.
You were at the meeting. I'm going to continue now. I'm now at 6:42. I have a public meeting starting at three, a public hearing in three minutes. I'm going to stop this discussion and everyone will be informed when we can meet again. Thank you. Has Robert joined us? Beth?
I'm sorry, he's having a lot of trouble for some reason and I'm not able to help him. But I do have him on the phone. I know he's not in the meeting. Can we have another thing?
Okay, so I'm scared he's got my profile.
Okay.
So join right there, I think.
I've got about two minutes and I'm happy to use it waiting for Robert to get connected so that we can continue. At 1.4, we'll welcome new member of the planning board. That is Robert Therrien. And he is with Beth on the phone now with his technical difficulties, but we do welcome him. I will wait on the reorganization of the board. I was the last vice chairman of the board, so it kind of falls on me for this meeting. And we can reorganize the board when we have our full members. We do still have a vacant position on the board. Beth, has there been any volunteer forms? Okay, thank you.
No.
And any luck with Robert?
No, not yet. He's trying a different browser at this point.
Beth, sometimes it's easier to grab your phone and download the Zoom app and manually put the information in. That's what I had to do for a while because my computer wasn't doing the same thing. That seems to work for me better.
He's getting a message that says "launch meeting" and he doesn't want to launch a meeting. He doesn't want to launch a meeting because he thinks he'll be...
Everybody gets to launch a meeting. He needs to click on the "launch a meeting" and then he'll be let in.
Okay, so Robert, you can go ahead and click on that, okay, when you get to it. Did you hear that? "Launch meeting"?
Go back to that.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
It is 6:45. I'm going to begin the reading of the public hearing notice, the legal notice.
What do you see now?
Beth, okay, thank you. In accordance with MGL Chapter 48 and the Town of Townsend's zoning bylaws, Section 145-42 Site Plan Review Special Permit and Section 145-65, the Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, May 9th, 2022 at 6:45 PM regarding an application from C&amp;J Realty Trust dated 7/24/2012, Mark Curtis, trustee, to remodel the interior of an existing three-story building by converting the second and third floor to residential units and retaining commercial units on the first floor and basement. The subject property is located at 241 Main Street, assessors maps, 51 blocks, 94 lot 0. Zone downtown commercial district. The public hearing will be held remotely. The link for this meeting is, I'm not going to read it, or dial in by phone numbers, given a password. The application is available for review at the Town Clerk and Planning Board offices at 272 Main Street or Digitality. Upon a request to planning@townsonmass.gov, parties wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposal may do so in writing prior to the hearing or at the virtual hearing in person or represented by an agent or an attorney. Interested parties are encouraged to attend. Sincerely, Lance McNally, Chairman, published in the Grotton Herald. And copy to all the butters and all the department heads for referrals. This notice was also published electronically. That is the reading of the notice. Those in attendance for this hearing, would you please state your names?
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm John Barrett, attorney here in Townsend, representing Mark Curtis, the trustee of the C&amp;J Realty Trust, the applicant.
Thank you, John. I think we have to open, do I, do I have to open it? Open the public hearing after the reading or before? It was 6:45 anyway when I was reading it. So the meeting is open and I need a roll call of the board members, please.
Carol Hofstas, present.
Ian Ortiz, present.
Mike Verosco, present.
And others need to introduce themselves who are on the meeting. Chaz, do you want to start?
Chaz Sexton-Duranian liaison.
Michael Crowley, Land News Coordinator for the Town of Townsend.
Beth Thompson, Planning Board Administrator. And I'm sorry, I might have missed. Did you appoint Ian as a voting full member tonight? Thank you.
Yes. I did that as you were trying to get Robert. Okay. Who is, I guess I'll have to do this, Galaxy Tab, can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, that's, that's Mr. Curtis, Laurie. Can you unmute yourself there, Mark, or I just recognized him.
Yeah?
Open meetings on the dialog, someone on your phone.
Mark Curtis.
Mr. Curtis.
Okay, thank you. You can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. All right, I need, Stan, do you want to continue? I'll just go with what I have here. I need all people in the meeting to identify themselves.
I am Jason Dubois from DC Engineering and Survey in Charlton, Mass. So I'm a civil engineer on the site plan.
Thank you.
I'm here for, I'm Stan Dillis. I'm here for the next meeting.
Thank you, Stan.
Eric Hartman. Building Commissioner. I'm here for a different idea, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric.
I'm Terry McNabb, bought into the property.
Thank you. You know Julie's...
Julie Byers, I'm just listening in.
Thank you, Julie. And is that everyone?
Laurie, there's Sue's iPad.
Who's Sue's iPad?
And there's a phone number, too.
Sue Liscio, Laurie.
Hi, Sue. And who is the phone number, 978-314-7283?
Kim Craven.
Thanks, Kim. All right, I think, Beth, that's everyone.
Yep, thank you. Robert, I'm going to have to help with...
Is Robert on yet? No.
Madam Chair, could I suggest, could he just call in and be present by telephone?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. All right, great idea.
Thanks, Beth. Please handle that.
And we can wait if you want to wait, Laurie, till we get Bob on.
Because that'll be the full board?
Yeah.
The other thing, Beth, is I don't have a list if I'm supposed to go through this in a specific order. I do not have it. If you could screen share the process?
Yep, the public hearing sheet? Yeah, I can do the public hearing sheet. One second.
Notice that I, but not the notice I just read, but the public hearing sheet, okay.
Okay, so if you call in, you can go ahead. Let me get them situated here. And checklist.
Okay, so do you want the number to call in, Robert?
Please, Beth.
Okay, sorry. Here we go. Beth, can you call in? Okay, so John, I guess you'll be up first as soon as we get Robert, if you're okay with it. You'll be up first.
No, that's fine.
Everybody can see the process now. I don't claim to be an expert. I always need to cheat, cheat.
We all have to have those. As you indicated, I'll start off and then I would, you know, probably defer to Jason Dubois for any, you know, the technical questions or Mark for any comments about the project itself.
Well, and thank you, John, for that suggestion. So simple, we forget about it, right?
Well, I've had to resort to myself sometimes, for some reason, you know. But what I did tonight, as I went onto the town website, because I was looking for your email. I know you sent me the link, but I couldn't find it with all my emails. So I went on the town website and I went to the link here under the, you know, the notices of meetings. And it worked.
Excellent, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't, I still don't stand.
I don't see him yet either. But I haven't got off the phone.
We are, you know, we are being recorded. So Robert will have the opportunity to do the recording, the part that he does miss. So I'm going to ask you to begin so we're, because we're about 10 minutes late.
Sure, okay. Madam Chairman, thank you. Again, I'm John Barrett, representing Mark Curtis, the trustee of the C&amp;J Realty Trust. Mr. Curtis, the trust bought the property last summer from longtime owners, Townsend Center Realty, and has found that it makes sense to convert some of the commercial space, which is largely unused on the second and third floor for residential uses. And so he's had a plan prepared. I think we did submit to the zoning board for a special permit under the bylaw that allows for the conversion of existing commercial properties in the downtown district. And the zoning board did grant a special permit for that. And then we're here before you folks on the site plan review process and special permit. To describe basically what we're talking about here is converting the second and third floor to four two-bedroom apartments and two one-bedroom apartments. I think most of the, you know, the property is, the building is sprinkled, so there won't be any issues with that. I think the biggest concerns are probably regarding the parking and the layout of the lot. And the board should have a plan. Hopefully, they all, everyone has a copy of the plan. I'm not sure how you're doing it now with remote meetings. I know I delivered plans to the Town Hall, but hopefully you've got something. You can see what the layout of the lot is, particularly for the site plan.
Okay.
And yeah, that's it. It is kind of a weird lot, admittedly. And as a curious note, I was on the zoning board when this plan was approved about 24 years ago. But I think that that's far enough removed that there's no conflict of interest. The, so as you can see, the building is here in the front part of the lot. And then there's a sort of a causeway that's a driveway through to the parking in the back. Mr. Dubois has gone through the parking. And there's a couple of spots where there, we feel are parking spots that weren't shown on the original plan, which do constitute viable parking spaces. And so I believe his plan does show that we have 35 parking spaces. By our calculation, we would need to have 25 for the uses in the building. There basically is a, one commercial use in the basement. And the first floor is kind of divided into two sections. Each would require five spaces. But one issue is, you know, there is a provision in the bylaw, which is a little bit hard to, I guess, reconcile with the facts, is that if you have another business, you need at least five spaces for each business. I'm not sure how that plays out with tenants. It certainly, you know, your existing space isn't increased at all. But we feel that we have enough parking to accommodate the proposed use with the tenants and also to accommodate some of the parking needs of our neighbors, the McNabb Pharmacy and the medical equipment business they have there. And in fact, there is an agreement between, originated between Townsend Center Realty and Charlotte McNabb whereby each party, well, Townsend Center gave an easement to McNabb's for parking in the rear parking lot. And McNabb, Ms. McNabb, gave an easement for Townsend Realty to pass over this section here. Oh, I got, oh, I can do that, wow. I didn't know I was doing that with a finder here. Can you see that finder or maybe that's just me? Right in the middle, I guess it's not, you can't see it. Right in the middle there, there is where the easement is for Townsend Center Realty to pass. That's where you got it. That's it, just a little lower, Beth, is, that's the easement, which basically allows for a wide enough access to go through. Also, there is other parking here behind McNabb's. And I think this is just one set of parking spaces. There's another set of parking spaces below those four. There's, in fact, I believe, eight spaces here behind the pharmacy. So, you know, it's an existing building. The, right now, we are waiting to hear back from Nishoba with respect to the septic plan. Plan has been submitted for the conversion and the septic system would need to be modified, obviously. But we haven't gotten that, you know, approval yet. We're waiting on that. The, as far as going through the special permit criteria, we would suggest that it's an existing building. There's no plan and change in the footprint of the building. And it's certainly adequate in size for the proposed use. We think the site is usable or suitable for the proposed use. There are other mixed-use buildings in the downtown. And in fact, I think the general tendency is to encourage it in the downtown area or, you know, the neighborhood commercial districts because it would afford people the ability to live, you know, and be able to walk around and go to the different stores, post offices, what have you, and not have to take a car all the time. So we don't feel that this is going to result in any traffic impact. Admittedly, there would be tenants. You know, we're not sure exactly. I think the expectation is probably to, you know, market the units towards people that would be, you know, downsizing, looking to downsize and not need as much room. So as far as impact on the visual, neighborhood visual character, we don't feel anything would be changed. Probably would be some improvements with shrubbery after the parking lot. And I neglected to mention for the septic system, the septic system is going in underneath the parking, as I understand it. And Jason can maybe elaborate on that. So there will be some upset while that's done. And the parking lot will have to, I believe, be repaved. But after it's done, you know, I'm sure that there will be some bushes and plantings that can, you know, enhance the area. So, and again, no change in the utilities. We still get Unitil. And I believe the public services are adequate for the proposed use. Because nothing is really changing with respect to the foot... really changing with respect to the footprint. We don't believe there'd be any impact on groundwater, or the surface water quality. But I think maybe Jason can speak more, more to that particular point. So that's basically an outline, I know you folks have another hearings coming up, so I don't want to blather on, but that's basically an outline of the project. And I don't know if, Mark, if you want to add anything that maybe I forgot or missed?
No, basically, as far as the septic, we've just, you know, we're just upgrading the septic to meet the current Title V code, as far as the amount of usage. It is going to be offset from the existing parking lot somewhat, and it's going to be overlapping part of the parking lot, probably about one-third of it, and that'll all go back together, that'll get repaved, along with vegetation and plantings that were disturbed, and we'll probably be adding some plantings.
And Jason, do you have any comments that you could add on this?
I mean, I guess as far as the drainage goes, you know, like you had stated, we're not, we're not looking to change any, any grades, or any, any flow patterns, or anything out there with what's currently happening. And as, as far as the parking, I mean, you know, there's really no, there's really no changes, other than, you know, maybe 100, 100, 100 square feet or so of, you know, additional pavement, just to clean up the parking spaces.
So I, I think if the board has questions, or other people have questions or comments, I know Mr. McNabb is here, and I know he supports the project, but let him speak for himself.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Beth, can I have my cheat sheet back, please?
Sure.
I'm going to try to work within this timeframe, we've got about 25 minutes left. Okay, so now we would have, okay, Beth, you've reviewed the plan and the application.
Yeah.
Anything that does not comply to the rules and regs and bylaws of the town?
No, I looked through the whole application, and everything is fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board members?
Negative. Everything seems clear on my side.
Michael or Carol? No, I don't have any questions.
The only question I have, I might have missed it, because my computer's breaking up a little bit, is how many units? I know there's two floors that they're doing, is it going to be a floor, a unit, or?
No, on, on the third floor, there actually would be a one, one-bedroom apartment and one, two-bedroom apartment. And on the second floor, there'd be one, one-bedroom apartment and three, two-bedroom apartments.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I'll open it up to the abutters now, if you have a comment.
We're just in support of the project, like to be good neighbors, and we don't think that the parking is going to be any problem across the businesses that we own and, and what Mark is wanting to propose, so we're in complete support.
Can you state your name, please?
Sure, it's Terry McNabb, Jr.
Thank you, Terry, appreciate the comment. Robert, you are with us, do you have any comments in reference to this project? Hearing none. I'll open it up to anyone else at this hearing who would like to speak? Seeing none. Beth, any mandatory referrals to read into the record?
Yes. Comments? I just had jaw surgery, so if someone else doesn't mind, wouldn't mind reading these, it would really be, Mike, perhaps?
I don't mind reading them, as long as they're shared on there, because I'm on my work computer, so we can't, I don't have access to some of the stuff.
All right.
I don't mind reading it.
Can you see it there?
Yep, thank you for zooming that in a little.
Okay.
All right. Townsend Planning Board Mandatory Referral, 241 Main Street, Proposed Mixed-Use Building. Townsend Board of Health comments, the applicant must receive approval from the Board of Health for a septic system capable of serving the intended use. Plans have been submitted for review, but the design has been revised several times. The revisions were originally a result of decreasing the number of bedrooms for the residential use. Most recently, the revisions were a result of the parking lot drainage and maintaining offsets for the proposed leaching area. I'm hopeful that a version of the plan will be presented to the Board of Health for their approval shortly, but as of now, they have not received an approval for the proposed septic to serve the renovated building. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me at (978) 772-3335, extension 307. The residential component must comply with Department of Public Health Code 105 CMR 410.000, minimum standard for human habitation, rec Metcalf as agent for the Townsend Board of Health. All right, so this is a referral notice from the Conservation, from the Conservation Committee, CJ Realty Trust, 241 Main Street, the SS Map 51, Block 94.
You could just read the comment, Mike.
Perfect, thank you, I was just, I was just going to skip down to it. Non-territory control for conservation, signed, don't know who that is, can't read that. Water Department for the same applicant and address, must upgrade water service. The Highway Department for the same applicant, same address, there's no comments. The Forest Selectmen for the same applicant, same address, we thank the Planning Board for their work, and I'm sure they'll make this right decision, the BOA supports mixed-use housing.
And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for reading those.
No problem.
And then, back to my cheat sheet.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other comments in, in the proposal, either in support of, supported the proposal?
There were no written comments received.
Okay. I can open it up to any comments, though, okay. So, I, I didn't make a comment yet, and I would like to do so, and that is that I support this project, we are in favor of mixed-use here, and as long as, my opinion, as long as the Board of Health gives their approval, I think this will be a great asset for the town. You did mention that, and I've kind of heard, you said downsizing, but I, I heard something about either senior elder or affordable housing. Are there any thoughts in that realm? John or Mark?
Yeah, I guess, I think, in fact, in our application, we did think that, you know, probably looking for, you know, older citizens, you know, somebody like my age, might become tenants there. But Mark, maybe you can expand on that?
Sure, they're, they're relatively small units either way. They are pretty much geared for people that are, you know, really winding it down, retirees, that's, that's pretty much what we're going to be looking for. I think that that's what would fit in best.
Okay.
And that's, that's pretty much it.
Did you, or did anyone approach you about affordable housing? And the, and what the pros and cons might be for the community, as well as yourself?
I don't know.
No, not yet. No, I haven't spoken to anybody.
Well, Madam Chairman, is there someone, maybe the Housing Authority, we should approach about that? I, I don't know, I mean, we certainly weren't coming into this as a, from the standpoint of a 40B-type project, so it's...
Yeah, no, it doesn't, right, and 40B isn't the only thing that affiliates with affordable housing, and since, well, for many reasons. One, the governor's plan of wanting to streamline processes for increase in housing, and also the, well, this won't fall into it exactly, but the MBTA affiliate town that we are, also is looking for affordable housing within those that use the, the trains and whatnot for commuting. So, I'm sure that affordable housing, that the Housing Authority would be interested in speaking with you, and I'm certainly happy to do so as well. The previous owners once approached me about this, and I told them that it was a great idea, and that they would most likely get backing from the town, because we are in need of housing. So there are ways to do this that can, I think, benefit the owners, as well as the town as a whole. And those are my comments.
I completely agree.
Okay, well, I look forward to speaking with you, then.
Sure.
Are there any other comments to this hearing? We still have a few minutes.
I can make a couple of comments.
Who's speaking?
This is Robert Therian.
Oh, hi, Robert, welcome.
Hi, I finally got on the screen, but I don't, I don't know how the audio works yet, but I'm using my phone for audio.
We can hear you.
This is, I really support the concept and the project here. I think it's an ideal location for the use that they're discussing, more single people, elderly people, to be in a centralized location is going to be beneficial for them. I see nothing in the proposed project that I see is detrimental to the town at all. I, affordable housing, there are affordable housing programs, 40B is one of them, there's a variety of assets that could be available, too. The concern, I guess we have, or that I have about this, is I think the mixed-use is appropriate. We already have mixed-use in the area. I think they've made all the accommodations they need to on the site, and explained it well enough. I don't see any issue with public safety. However, I think the town definitely does need to assure that the type of tenant that's being presented here will indeed be the occupant there. So I don't know what kind of controls the applicant has in trying to consider that.
Comments, Robert? That's more of a management thing, I would think, rather than within our purviews of planning. Just, just to clarify. Any other comments? Thank you, Robert.
If, if I might, Madam Chairman, and I don't know if, if Mark would like to address that, but I, I think that's a, you know, a well-founded concern, Mr. Therian, but it's, it's basically, if you consider what Mr. Curtis has done, since he bought the property about nine months ago, he's come in, he's repainted everything, fixed a lot of the problems that we had, and he obviously wants to do something that's going to be a financially viable thing. I practice a lot in landlord and tenant, and I know that it can be, a landlord has to be very careful in selecting their tenants, making sure that they've got good people that will maintain their property, and, and so I'm certain that Mr. Curtis will do that.
I have that confidence, too.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'm ready to close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion to do so.
Lori?
Who's speaking, please?
Hi, it's Kim Creven, I just wanted to go on record as supporting this project. I hope that it will breathe a little bit of life into our downtown, and that we might have other similar project policies.
Thank you, Kim, appreciate the comment. Anything else?
If I, if I might, I know, I'm just going by your, your cheat sheet there, and I know you've asked for anybody to make comments, but you might, and I hate to do this, honestly, but you might want to see, is there anybody that wants to speak in opposition specifically?
Oh, sorry.
Just in case they didn't, they were waiting.
All right, I thought I did. I thought I did. Was there anyone else, or anyone in opposition of this project? Hearing and seeing none. I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing at 7:20. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this public hearing at 7:20.
I shall move.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ian. I need a roll call vote, please, from the board members.
Carol Hofstes, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Barosko, yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much, everyone.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I might, Madam Chairman, now, is the board going to deliberate, or do you go to your next hearing, or?
I, I didn't have a plan to deliberate it after the closing of the hearing tonight, so... I... Beth? I don't, are, are we to vote tonight?
If, if the board is prepared to vote, I'm, I've already drafted the decision, so I, you know, I see no outstanding issues, and if the board doesn't have any outstanding issues, and I, and they're prepared to take a vote, then somebody could motion, and I would motion based on the legal notice, I would make a motions that we grant the site plan review special permit pursuant to 14542 and Section 14565, and name the applicant and the property, and vote on it.
Is that what you have prepared as the motion?
I haven't prepared the motion, but I would just go from the legal notice and make your motion, and then take a vote. And if you want to wait, you can review my draft decision, that's fine, too. The decision, you know, this, whatever, is going to reflect whatever your vote is, so...
Okay, so, Mr. Barrett, since you do not have the septic design plan yet, would you and your clients have an objection to us taking the vote at our next meeting?
Well, I, I guess, Madam Chairwoman, what I've seen boards do in the past is, if they are generally in support of the, the site plan, is to vote to grant it, subject to the applicant obviously getting an approved septic system permit, approval from the water department, I know that was a concern from the water department, that, that we have a proper water supply, so it would be a decision that's contingent on some of those conditions.
Okay, and would you also entertain meeting with the Housing Authority?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because I really do think that that would be a great help to the community and not, without inhibiting anything, and I can explain this to you at some point, without inhibiting anything on behalf of your client.
That'd be fine, Lori, yeah. I guess the only, the only thing with the delay is that, and Mark can address that, you know, everybody's, you know, wants to keep things rolling, you know, and if it can be...
Oh, I agree.
On a contingent basis, that would be preferable, I think. So that, you know, it'd be subject to the conditions. I think Beth probably has a pretty good idea what the conditions would be.
Yeah.
But obviously, I don't mean to interfere with the board's deliberating about this and discussing the conditions. It's up to you guys, you know.
Correct. Yeah, he won't have a building permit until he has cleared Board of Health and cleared the water, you know, all of their other criteria that they have to do. So I can write the condition if it pleases you that they meet with the Townsend Housing Authority. That can be a condition on the decision, if you'd like that. And also condition the Board of Health, but that's pretty much inherent to the process. They're not going to get a building permit without the Board of Health approval, so.
Okay, and I'm not looking for anything to stop this at all, okay? I'm just trying to find something that I know is a, is an opportunity of helping the community in the housing part of this, okay? And I see Mike keeps shaking his head yes, so I am, I'm trying to make the point.
I'm shaking my head yes too.
Make a motion.
Okay, yes, Robert?
I'd like to make a motion that we advance the vote, relieve any other burden, and support the project subject to all the regulatory requirements mandated in getting an occupancy permit. I don't see any reason to delay the vote, and I shall move that we act on it tonight.
Beth, can you draft the motion from what he stated, which falls under public notice, okay?
Yes, from the public notice, yes.
Do I have a second to the public notice to approve?
I say done it.
Thank you, Ian. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'd like a vote, voice vote of the board, please.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Mike Barosko, yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And members of the board, we appreciate your, your help with this.
May I ask for another vote?
I look forward to speaking with you.
Okay. One more vote, I'm sorry, point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would you be willing to come and sign the decision when it's ready? Oh, you're in Las Vegas. Ooh, okay, when will you return? Yeah, I'm, I don't want you to have to say that in public, I'm sorry. So...
Now everybody knows. Okay, so I'll be back on Sunday.
Okay, all right. Otherwise, we could have other board members sign it and just not have you sign this one. That's fine too, if other board members would be willing to come in to sign.
We're not, we're not in that big of a rush, Beth, thanks. That's okay. We're still going to get to those point of health.
I could stop in if need be.
So then if you want to take another vote, that the chairman will sign on behalf of the board.
I'll need a motion for that, please, for the chairman to sign on behalf of the board.
I'll make a motion for the chairman to sign on behalf of the board with the site permit.
Site plan, yeah.
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. I need a roll call vote.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Barosko, yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much. Hopefully, that, that takes care of everything, okay? Thank you.
Again, Madam Chairwoman, thank you, members of the board, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I really appreciate your efforts, really do. And it's a great asset to the community, so thank you very much.
It will be, yeah.
Thank you, guys, for everything.
Okay, I have basically 30 seconds, probably, no, I don't have any time. Okay. It is now 7:30 PM. And I am calling, I'm going to read the following notice for the next hearing. In according, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 4015(c) Scenic Roads, Townsend General Bylaws, Chapter 106, and Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Article 417531-34, hearings under the Scenic Road Act, the planning board will hold virtual public hearing via Zoom on Monday, May 9, 2022, at 7:30 PM regarding an application from Timothy Hoffman, Michael Hoffman, Brenda Hoffman, Bonnie Belanger, to relocate 20 feet of stone wall at 221 North End Road, map 46 block 1 lot 0. You may attend the virtual public hearing using the following Zoom access, meeting ID, passcode, and by phone. The application is available for review at the Town Clerk and Land Use Offices during normal business hours. The public is invited to attend, respectfully submitted, Lance J. McNally, Chairman, published in the Broughton Herald, April 22 and April 29, 20... And, oh, wow, I think there's probably a correction that was needed in this notice because we have 2022 and we have 2021. Beth, can you check on that?
Yeah, that was corrected, I'm sorry. When I sent you, I sent you an old one, I'm sorry. It was definitely corrected.
Well, then I'm not sleeping while I'm reading it.
No. It was a year ago.
Okay, copy to the butters and all the departments at Town Hall. And that is now correct down here as April 22 and April 29 of 2022.
There you go.
So this public hearing is now in session and I need to have a roll call vote of the board members.
Carol Hoff says present.
Ian Ortiz, present.
Mike Barosko, present.
Robert?
Robert Therian, present.
And Laura Schiffern, present. I should have done it before the legal notice. Okay, so who is here representing the applicant?
I am. Stan Dillis from Dillis and Roy.
Nice to see you, Stan.
You too. Nice to be, nice to be seen.
Oh, that's my, that's my line.
Better to be seen than viewed. So this is a site on North End Road where we created a single-family A and R lot out of about a 60-acre parcel. This is right up against the New Hampshire Town Line. There, there's about 20 feet of stone wall that we'll need to relocate in order to get the driveway in. There's a gap from the existing stone wall that heads off to the east. To get to the Town Line, that's about 10 feet. About 10 feet of the wall will be relocated there. The other 10 feet will be put back at 90 degrees off of the, off of the road, perpendicular to the existing stone wall. There's already an existing swale along the side of the road. We'll install two 18-inch culverts, which is what the Highway Department typically likes with some riprap on each end, and then they'll be able to access, access their new lot through their own driveway. And that's basically the proposal. There's one large tree there that will remain. There's, there's no other trees along that stretch of road that would have to, have to be altered or taken out. That's, that's it. Be happy to answer any questions. So that picture actually shows it pretty well. If you see to the left of that picture, there's no stone wall, but the applicant's property continues about another 10 to 12 feet. So they take some of the stones and build the stone wall there. And then the remaining stones would just be turned 90 degrees back along the driveway. The driveway would kind of go where you can see that it's already worn down or it's mowed. And the house is going to be way up over that knoll in the back.
Okay, I think there may be some comments. Beth, if I could have the cheat sheet, please? Okay. Did that. Beth, in review of the application, have all, is all okay?
Yep. Everything is complete, complete application.
And our bylaws, okay. Okay, are there any comments from the board? Questions or comments from the board members?
No comments.
I don't have any comments.
Okay.
No comments.
Okay.
I don't see anything objectionable about what's being proposed there at all.
Okay, thank you, Robert. And are there any mandatory referral comments?
Oh, sorry. You ready, Mike? Michael?
Yep, sorry, I'm trying to unmute. All right, Highway Department for the applicant Timothy Hoffman, Michael Hoffman, Brenda Hoffman, and Bonnie Belanger. Sorry if I butchered any of the last names. Address is 221 North End Road, access is map 46 block 1 lot 0. The Highway Department's comments, I met and spoke with Michael Hoffman at the location listed and I don't have an issue with removing a portion of the stone wall. Site distances look good. Water Department for the same applicant, address, and parcel ID, no water comments. Conservation Committee for same applicant, address, and parcel ID, non-jurisdictional for conservation.
And that's it?
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Now, are there any comments from any, and do we, do we have everybody's attendance for this hearing?
Not yet. I'll capture it, though. I might be able to capture it.
And if you have any questions, let, let's get that resolved right now of people in attendance for this hearing.
Let's see. Oh, here we go.
Was the, was the Galaxy tab, was that Mike Curtis or Mark Curtis?
Yeah, that's Mark.
Okay, I wonder if he knows he's still on. Okay, and...
And Kim Creaven is this number.
Okay, so you've got everyone?
I have an iPhone. Is that Rob? It just says iPhone. No.
I think, I can, I can see Robert now.
Yeah, I finally got him.
So there's somebody listed as iPhone.
Oh. And I don't know who that is, so let's see. Who is on with their iPhone? Identify yourselves for the hearing.
They decided to leave.
Okay, very good. All right, so we've done, kept that and referrals. And are there any butters here that wish to make any comments? And then we have public questions. I did get a comment from the public. The only comment or question or concern from this member of the public was in reference to, is the, while being reconstructed the way it is now, I guess the question's for Stan. The way it is now, like they're not going to be adding lights to it or it's going to be higher or lower?
No, it would match what's there now.
Okay.
In fact, just by coincidence, Mike's father, who is a senior citizen, loves to build walls and he's, he's rebuilt almost all the walls on that property, so I'm sure, he does a great job. I'm sure he'll be doing it.
Okay.
It keeps him out of trouble.
Okay, so I've presented that and anything else that I might have. So is there, if there is no other comments, positive, negative, then I will entertain a motion to approve the application as per the public notice read at the beginning of this meeting. Does that work for you, Beth?
One moment, please. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just make a motion that you approve the application and put the, include the applicant's name and include the address and take a vote.
I'll entertain a motion for the application regarding 221 North End Road, map 46 block 1 lot 0, by Timothy Hoffman, Michael Hoffman, Brenda Hoffman, Bonnie Belanger, regarding the 20-foot stone wall. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Robert moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Carol. Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Robert, yes.
Did I get Michael?
Mike Barosko, yes.
And Laura Schiffern. Do you need another motion? Does this need to be signed?
Yeah.
The chair, well, okay. Can I get a motion to have the chairman sign on behalf of the board?
I'll make a motion to have the chairman sign the applicant, the approval on behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Robert Therian, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Now I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing at 7:43 PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing at 7:44 PM.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, vote, please, to adjourn the meeting.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
No, the public hearing, the public hearing.
Thank you.
We weren't going to get out of it that quick.
That lag.
Oh, God.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Thank you, Carol. Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ian. Roll call, vote, please.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Robert Dearing, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan, as always.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm going to go back up to... I hope you heard your welcome, Robert.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome to as a new board member. At 1.4, and then on 1.5, we should, we should have the election of the chairman, vice chairman, and clerk. So normally, our newest member gets to be the clerk. And everybody's going to tell you that because Carol's, I've been there, Carol's been there, and Michael's been there. So I'll need an, I'll need to have a motion for, for these three positions from the board.
I'm afraid I wouldn't be a very good clerk, though.
Well, the clerk reads the correspondence for, and public meetings that Beth gives to you. So basically, that's what you're doing. You're not, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I need a motion, please, from my board members to get officers elected here,
I'll make a motion to make Rob the clerk.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, no further discussion. Seen or heard? I'll entertain a roll call vote.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
Robert?
I guess, I mean.
Yes, it's unanimous. I would like a motion have one of our other board members be the vice chair. Or me. I'm sharing this. I can't make motions, guys.
Who wants to be vice chair?
I'm, I'm, so I'm supposed to say I'll make a motion to make you the vice pres, the vice chair?
Well, we want to make her the chair.
I'm sorry?
That's all right. Okay, I, I, I may suggest, if I may suggest to the board to, and, and I hope you say yes, for Mike Verosco to be vice chair, please.
I'll make a motion to make Mike Verosco the vice chair.
I say I'm the motion.
Michael, will you accept?
I'll accept.
Okay, seeing or hearing no other comments here, I'll take a roll call vote to make Michael Verosco the vice chair of planning board.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Robert?
I say I move.
You say yes?
Yes.
Michael? You accept, right? Yes?
Yep, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. It's unanimous. Michael is the vice chair. Congratulations, Michael. Is there a motion for chairman?
I'll make a motion to make Laura Schiffern the chairperson, chairwoman.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Robert Dearing, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Oh, it's extremely painful. I don't know, things happen for whatever reason. Going with the flow here for as long as I can. Okay, we already went through 1.7, 1.8. No. Okay, 1.8. Approval of the minutes, March 28th, '22, and April 11th, 2022. I need motions. If there are any questions or concerns about the minutes and you need to take them separately, I will do so. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for, to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2022, and April 11th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 28th and April 11th of 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Robert Dearing, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Michael?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you very much. That brings us to work session. 3.1. Beth, can you take over now the work session and the sharing of what we need to review?
Yeah. What do we have for 3.1? I'm sorry.
Preliminary subdivision application and plans.
Yes, I just have one question, if I may, Madam Chair. I was busy during the pre-public hearing session, and I just wondered if you were able to take an addition under Section 1.6 for 22 Main Street. Were you able to do that?
No, no. I am.
Would it be possible to do that now?
Yes, yes. Happy to do that, in fact.
Okay, so, yeah.
Where can, um, I can, I can put that as 3.6. Does that work under work session?
Um, yeah.
Someplace other than work session?
It's actually under correspondence. So it's a correspondence that we received.
Okay, this is received, okay.
So for...
So we're going to add 22 Main Street to 4.1.
Uh, correct. It was from Townsend. Perfect. That's perfect.
Okay, all right.
And.
No objection from any board members. Is that correct?
None.
Hearing seeing none. Okay, 22 Main Street is added to the correspondence 4.1 notices. Anything else, Beth?
No, that's perfect. Thank you. The board has received a, I'll screen share it, an application for a preliminary subdivision. so And I'll just put that up on the screen. So this has been received by the land use department, and it's a planning board purview. I'm sorry, it's not fully on the screen. But we are working through the process per the regulations, and at this point, the application, according to our review and land use, is complete. The next step is to, we have provided a couple of cost estimates to the board for a pre-review. We have two cost estimates that we received, and I put them in the board members packets. And at this point, the preliminary subdivision will be, the, the three sheets here will be reviewed pursuant to the bylaw that preliminary subdivisions require. And that would be an initial review. And we would get a report from the peer review engineer. And it was about a two-week turnaround. At that point, the planning board, once they have a chance to look that over, would come to a decision on the preliminary subdivision, and they would vote on approval of the preliminary And so, if you want, I can put the peer review engineer, you know, the two cost estimates that we received. One of them has worked with Townsend in the past. They are actually coming at a lower price. And they're familiar with the town, and they did a great job on the, on another project that they worked on for the town. So I would recommend that. And I didn't know if the board would take a vote to go ahead and let us pursue that engineering review and then put it on the next agenda for approval.
Okay, I, I, I'm not sure what the process is here now, but what are the two quotes?
Oh, they are, one of them is from Hancock Engineering. Do you want me to screen share or just explain them? I can, let's see.
So I noticed the date on the plan is November 2021. So that's about six months ago?
November 2021? Yeah, I, I don't know what the date, you know, I don't, I don't know how that's significant, but so the first.
Can I have, so Mike has reviewed, Mike Crowley has reviewed, our land use coordinator, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we both have reviewed it, and we found it to be complete. And the next step is to, again, have a consultant review it and then bring it back to the planning board for approval. And then simultaneously, the applicant needs to submit to the Board of Health as well. So I don't know if they've done that yet, but that's part of the regulations and the requirements for preliminary subdivisions. That's in the code. But at this point, we did receive a cost estimate from Green International, and they're quoting their engineering review at a cost. Their total services were 2,500. The applicant has already paid the fees, so this is in a 53G account, ready for, ready for withdrawal. Everything has been done administratively. So the first one that we got there is Green International, and the other one is from Hancock Associates. And they're pretty much, their estimated budget is 2,250. They have worked on this project in the past for Townsend, so this is a new preliminary application, of course. But I would.
So did the applicant, so they already paid you the fee, that, so the applicant decided on that engineer, or you did?
No, it's a, it's really, I mean, it's the planning board's decision, or if you want to allow land use coordinator to sign the contract, however you want to do it. But we're ready to move forward with the engineering review of the preliminary plan. We have the money. The applicant has paid the application fee, and he's also paid for the, the peer review as required per the, per the.
And he knows that it's the same engineer? The same peer engineer?
I don't know. I don't know that. It's really up to the town. He does have, I know in a definitive, you know, if there is any, there's a appeals process, but I am not familiar with the preliminary, so I don't know if that's an issue at all.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, it's really up to the board.
What do you need from the board at this time? You need them to vote to approve this peer engineer?
Yeah, one or the other. You know, whatever you, the board would decide to go with, or allow the land use staff to go ahead and pick one. That's fine, too. I would recommend Hancock, but.
All right, so, but the only reason why I'm bringing this up is that we have a lot of new board members, including our land use coordinator. And a comment made before was, we don't like to use anyone who, we don't like to use people that are, like you try to use different engineers.
Okay.
What I got from the statement that I think you made, you know, you like to go with anybody that's in town, or you always like to get that other different perspective. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from in my thinking. Should we be doing this, or should we actually be getting another set of eyes on it versus the same set of eyes?
Absolutely.
And you said, and, and you said, it sounded like they were almost the same price.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, the other, the Green International is 2,500, which is the maximum that the applicant must, you know, submit for the peer review. So they're right at the line. I mean, if they can stay within the budget, that's perfectly fine, because that's, you know, you're not going to want to go back to the applicant for, you know, to ask for more. So, yeah, but they're right at the, yeah, very good point.
So I, I make that statement so that the board understands that this is what it's been in the past, and what is, now I'm asking the board, how do you feel about it? And, and what should we do?
Can I ask some questions? The contract with the consultants, is awarded by the town or the planning board or who?
I'll let that be added. I think it's the town.
And in, what, are the scope of services the same in both proposals?
Um, did you get a chance to review on, or no?
I didn't read the contracts, but the scope should be the same, the requirements should be the same for all of the peer reviews.
Yeah, it's, it's, they do them a little differently, so the formats are different. And you know what I mean? So it's kind of reform for the engineer. But I can read the task description, if that helps, for the, the Green International. It says we will perform a review of the plans for compliance with the code. We will perform a review of the plans for compliance with the code of the Town of Townsend, Massachusetts, Chapter 175 12C. We will prepare, prepare and provide a document with responses to the questions listed in Chapter 175 12D2, based on our review of the plans. We will attend one planning board hearing to present our findings and recommendations. And it's a total lump sum fee for the peer review of $2,500. They have a number of exclusions. The scope excludes review of the application package for compliance with other local, state or federal codes, ordinances or laws not mandated by the code of the Code of Townsend, the Town of Townsend, Massachusetts, Chapter 175 12. The other exclusion would be review of the definitive plan for compliance with Chapter 175 13 definitive subdivisions, while they weren't asked that, but, and review of any previously approved plans, reports or applications for compliance with local, state and federal codes, ordinances or laws. It also excludes review of the plans for wetlands and wetland delineations, plantings and landscapes, project during construction. A lot of these don't seem applicable. I think they're just trying to...
Okay, cover themselves?
Yeah, so, okay. And then in the other one, I can read you that scope as well. Their scope is listed, number one, review all engineering documents prepared for the development based upon the following criteria. A, soundness of methodology and calculations, conformity to standard engineering practice. B, conformity to or deviation from bylaws, regulations and ordinances as they apply to issues of onsite engineering, including grading, stormwater management, sewage and site traffic circulation. C, offsite impacts, including drainage impacts during storm events up to the 100-year storm event. This is pretty technical. You know, I think this might be more towards a definitive subdivision, but again, they're, they're including it in their scope, so that's good. Analyze the report on conformity of the development to the Town of Townsend rules and regulations. Number three, compile and report initial comments regarding, regarding the above issues. Number four, review revised engineering documents prepared by the developer submitted pursuant to prior comments made. Okay, so they're, they're going to respond, that's good. Prepare final report containing a summary of comments on civil engineering aspects of the development plans and the developer's response. Final determination of soundness of methodology and calculations and a narrative table considering the conformity of the development plans to standard engineering practices, state requirements and local bylaws, regulations and ordinances as they apply to the development. Final report to bear the seal and signature of a professional engineer who is actively registered in Massachusetts. Attend one meeting to discuss the findings and they've allocated two hours to that item. Be available to confer by telephone or in person with town officials and agents on matters within the scope of services set forth herein. And the cost, again, for this one is an estimate, well, they listed the estimate as 2,200 and then underneath that says reimbursable expense budget, $50. So I don't know what that means, I got to apologize there. Do you know what that means, Robert?
I can, I can, I get involved with these kinds of contracts all the time. I'm not familiar, I'm confused as to what proposal you just read.
Hancock.
But the Hancock is the one you just discussed?
Yep.
I feel that's far more comprehensive.
Yep.
Reimbursable expenses are things like reproducing photographs, making copies, you know, direct capital outlay from them on behalf to do their services.
Okay.
So personally, from what you just went through in terms of scope of services, I think the Hancock proposal is far more comprehensive. That's my personal thoughts on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a chair's privilege here. We have, there are two people who are here that were on the board when this was last discussed. And Jazz, if I may, can I call on you with, with your thoughts on this?
Um, I don't want to enter into any of the deliberation. I just really wanted to bring forward that the selectmen did have a policy to, when you are looking to go out, if there is a engineering firm that is Townsend, that they would be considered first as long as they meet the qualifications of what the scope of work is. That, that should be first and foremost. Secondly, no, I don't have any comments in regards to that, but I do know that the land use coordinator is patiently waiting with his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mike.
Don't worry. You guys, your, your work, you're doing, actually half the stuff I was going to bring up, you've already brought up anyway. So that's great. I was just going to say, one, that we have the Townsend first policy and Beth did a good job trying to solicit any engineers locally, but I don't believe Beth was able to find any engineers in town for Townsend. And so these two candidates are from outside of Townsend, but we did make that effort because that is important. Additionally, I wanted to just, as a point of order information for you guys, because these bids are under the certain threshold, they don't need, we don't need to select bids of a different amount, like if it's under, I think it's either $5,000 or $10,000, Beth, that you don't need to, competitive bid process, is that right?
$10,000.
And thank you. I almost, I almost said 10, I'm like, wait, is it five? I don't remember. Either way, we're under that threshold, so there doesn't need to be competitive bidding process. Beth did the due diligence and reached out to at least three people anyway and two just got back to us. But they are just, for your point of information, not from Townsend, but unfortunately there weren't any engineers from Townsend to solicit.
Okay, all right. It was, my, my whole thing was the comment I had heard before in, in using people familiar with the town, but I, I, sorry, I missed your vote about Townsend first, Jazz. Not that I disagree with it at all. Carol, you were on the board when this appeared before. Any comments?
Um, I actually liked the Hancock proposal because it was very comprehensive.
Okay.
What they're going to provide.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. I just wanted to have some input from the previous board members since they had seen this before. Okay, um, so I'll entertain a motion to go ahead with Hancock for the peer review on the Seaver Road preliminary subdivision application.
I'll make a motion to go with Hancock to do the peer review for Seaver Road subdivision, preliminary subdivision.
And is there a second?
Is the motion just to go forward to...
The motion is to choose Hancock as the engineer to do the site view replant, plan review.
I support that, yes.
Robert seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote please.
Carol Hofstetter, yes.
Mike Borosko, yes.
Mike, Ian?
Ian Ortiz, yes, I was on mute the whole time.
All right, Robert?
Robert, hearing, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, we'll get that started tomorrow.
Okay. So on 3.2, if, if I could just have, because we've already discussed this longer than I thought we would tonight, the master plan. Is the, is the board okay with booking a work session for just the master plan?
I am.
And if so, what, we don't necessarily have to have it in the evening. I don't know when might be a better time for others, if maybe we could do a five o'clock or, and I'm open to suggestions of what you would like to do.
I, as, as an associate member, I also have to, to find time because... This is a question, as an associate member, do I have?
Um, no, you don't have to.
No, no, no.
Nobody has to do anything, but...
No. Because I'm, I'm, on these days, I've been, I'm getting out around seven, seven thirty and six thirty is the earliest. So, 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 yeah.
Okay, can, Mike, can I hear your availability?
All right, I kept muting, unmuting myself, my clicker got stuck. I'm literally just trying to pull up my calendar right now. Mondays normally work best for me though.
Okay. Uh, Carol?
Um, most any day is okay by me. I just can't do next Monday because I got the open space meeting.
Okay, so, but that's at seven supposedly, right?
Yeah, and that's in person, so I need time to get down there.
Okay.
Yeah, I could do it earlier that day.
Okay, oh, okay. Robert, what is your schedule like?
It's very difficult for me. Seven o'clock any evening, it works better than earlier. So I don't have a problem if I have enough lead time to schedule things. You know, are we noticing?
Okay, um, so the next, Beth, I think you have our next meeting as the 23rd?
Yes. And the agenda is pretty light at this point.
Oh, okay. So maybe if we can just make, okay, so how about we add it to our next meeting's work session? And which of course is a six thirty start meeting, but we'll probably get to that after seven. And make sure that all of the board members have all of the information sent by the master plan committee.
Yep.
And those people who took certain chapters and I, I saw a lot of the comments that came through, again, were still a little bit grammatical and more of an edit and more of, well, if you said this here, it should be said everywhere kind of thing to follow through. So those particular things are not monumental or need an amendment of anything, but just for presentation to the board of selectmen, you know, kind of thing, to have that cleaned up. So if we could just get everything so that we can feel comfortable moving forward and if there is something that's substantial in change that the board feels, it can be done as an amendment. It will be extrap, not extrapolated, but it will be put separately or as an add-on to the report to the board of selectmen. If, is the board okay with that or am I missing something? Or anything from our liaison, Jazz, that you could recommend? We're certainly open to, does that sound like a plan?
I can, yep, I can be there.
Um, does it sound like a plan to get us going though? You know, to review grammatical, whatever punctuation, whatever, things that are like that as edits will be corrected. And then if there's anything major coming out of planning board, it'll be added to that in the report. Okay, all right. Um, so, okay, so next is Carol, Safe Roots to School, 3.3.
Uh, yes, on May 4th, Emma from the RIC department worked with the Hawthorne and middle, Hawthorne and Spalding schools and they did, they participated in the Safe Roots to School Walk Bike and Roll With Us Day. So that's, so I think we probably get a point for participating in that event.
Oh, great.
And I believe she's working on doing it all day, bike rodeo. And I'm not sure of the date though.
That'll be cute.
Yeah, that's, that's what we've been doing so far.
They're going to have cowboy hats instead of helmets?
Maybe, or helmets that look like cowboy hats.
Yeah, that would be cool, right?
Yeah.
Okay, 3.4, announcements, communications and training opportunities, Beth?
Yeah, that's, that's, I just kind of put that in there as a general catch-all with the new board. I didn't know if anybody wanted to make any announcements, bring any, you know, communications, you know what I mean?
Everybody have anything to say? Oh, Mike, you can go up.
Look at you, you spotted it right away, that was great. Uh, thank you, if you, if you don't mind. Just for your information, in the planning board materials that were submitted that, that you got this week, you may have noticed there's a new folder in there that's called the Committee and Board Master Packet. The Committee and Board Master Packet is just something we put together and it's now every committee and every board has this in their folder for each week. And it's a conglomerate, it's several resources for the board to utilize if they ever need it. In the current of a meeting, they can have the original document. So it includes the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Guide, the Selectman's Meeting Quorum Policy, the Townsend Board and Committee Handbook that everyone has issued when they get sworn in, and a copy of the oath that everyone takes when they get sworn in as well. So those are all there for your reference should you ever need them. It's just something we're trying to provide this, we had a, a couple of meetings where there was questions about quorum and especially, well, in particular with this, with this board where we weren't sure what the makeup was going to be, like how we had to call the meeting to order, if we had the right number of members, things like that. So it was just something we put together as a resource. It'll be in your folder every week. You obviously don't need to come out and read it out loud at every meeting, but it's always going to be there, so you always have that as a reference tool. So if there's any other conversation about requirements that are open meeting law or anything that's outlined in the guidance in any of the board's handbook, you have that accessible. So that's just for your information there. You could call it training or you can call it just general information, it's up to you, but there you are, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate those efforts. I know particularly those that do not have any staff will definitely be able to use that guidance. Okay, notices from Townsend and other towns, I believe, because we are in the next meeting. 4.1, so Beth, do you want to help guide Robert through this?
Which from?
You're on the notices from towns, Townsend and other towns, 4.1.
Okay. Okay, uh, where do I have it here? Notices from other towns. Oh, so 4.1.
On, on my agenda.
Yes, yeah, okay, so I think I mislabeled it in the folder, I apologize. It's actually, I, I am, I labeled it 4.2 in the folder, sorry, but it's actually notices from other towns, if you want that.
Well, it's towns as well.
Sorry?
It's towns, it's notices from towns and in other towns.
Yeah, okay, so I did, but I, I mislabeled it in your SharePoint folders as 4.2, so I apologize. But there are a number of notices of public hearing, Robert, and typically the planning board office receives them from Abutting Towns, Groton, Pepperell, Shirley. Typically, the Planning Board Office receives them from Abutting Towns, Groton, Pepperell, Shirley, Lunenburg. And they are announcing public hearings that are coming up. There also might be a notification of a decision that a particular board has made. Uh, they might be announcing a public hearing for a bylaw amendment that will be going before town meeting. Um, but that's the gist of it. Um, and we do have quite a stack. Uh, and I wasn't able to do a summary this time. But typically, the clerk will read through them and scan through those. So if you want to do that tonight, I don't know if you're able to open, open that file.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mike?
May I make a request? I know that we put 22 Main Street on this, in this section. Um, and I know Eric has been here waiting to give feedback on that. Can I ask that we address that first to be respectful at this time? Because I know he's been here for a good amount of time hanging out with us, which is great, but I'm sure he wants to do other things too.
Okay, um, thank you very much for that and yes, let's take that one first. And Beth, would you just mind for this evening to SharePoint everything with us? We won't put Robert on the spot this evening, but let's get 22 Main Street up first, have Eric address us. And then each one thereafter will kind of just summarize it, okay?
Absolutely, yeah. And do you want anything screen shared for this particular. Correspondence? I know that this is all very, you know, it's all very last minute. Uh, the board is, I don't know what you've been able to review individually. But um, there is a letter and a photograph that the board received from Eric, the building commissioner. And he is here, there's also, yeah, so a photograph and a letter from the building commissioner. And then Mike Crowley also provided a response for the board. So if you'd like, I can screen share all of that in what order?
Yes. Please put the photograph up and Eric's letter.
Okay.
And we'll have Eric speak to it.
Quickly do the photo. Of 22 Main Street. This is McDonald's, can anyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. McDonald's 22 Main. And then. Do I have a reader? Or do you want?
Um. I didn't see this one. Mine, I think you just added this like about an hour before the meeting.
No, that, well, this, yeah, this is very, it's, it's kind of, yeah. It was in the folders, but you weren't made aware of it until.
Okay.
Many of you right now.
Eric? Would you, would you mind addressing this please? Because I personally got complaints about this one, but um.
Yeah, um, you know, to summarize basically, and site plan review can be waived by the planning board is how I read it. There are four conditions, but one of the conditions was added in 2011 and the bylaw itself was added in the year 2000. So it's obvious that they can't be together. Uh, one pertains to solar ground mount, and if that were the case, then you'd only be able to waive it for solar ground mounts. Um, as you may or may not know, Sally Thurbin moved her business hastily in her account. Um, she's operating out of 22 Main Street for her veterinary clinic, but she never received any approval from any town board or anything like that. Since that time, she's gone before the Board of Health, I believe she has an order of conditions there and is working on that. Rick Metcalf would be better to speak on that, where she is in that process. I did request a, a copy of that order, but I haven't got it yet from Rick. Um, previously, Sally had gotten site plan review for 29 Main Street. And for whatever reason, some of you may have been in the board at that time, she didn't move forward. My assumption on that would be that she would have needed to install sprinklers in that building because it was gonna be mixed use. Uh, similar to what Mark Curtis was saying earlier, that building already has sprinklers. The building code requires any mixed use, any R-type, especially in a change in use, that it is sprinkled. So I think that deterred her from moving forward on 29 Main Street. Uh, unbeknownst to anyone here in the town, she moved over to 22 Main Street. Which, um, you know, hastily is one thing, but it is an advantage to her because she won't have to install the sprinklers there. Uh, just because it's a veterinary clinic, there's no residential use there. Um, my initial review with her is that site plan review would be required because it's a change in use. And that requires five or more spaces. Um, but the way I read the bylaw, the planning board can waive that. Um, or I can waive it, put it that way, I can waive it after consultation with the planning board, who consultates with the Board of Selectmen and the Chief of Police or his liaison. Um, one thing I will say is that the original site plan review for 29 Main Street really was lacking substance. Um, if you read through it, it doesn't really have any conditions. Uh, you know, and in this case, if the conditions are gonna be the same as that, where it pertains, you know, it says she has to comply with the sign bylaw. Has to comply with the lighting bylaw and every other law that she already has to comply with. Um, I don't see the point in having her perform the site plan review. Um, main issue over there is gonna be the parking, and that's why I included the picture. Uh, but she's gonna have to do that anyway, again, because it's part of our bylaws, required. So I'd like the board to deliberate on that, maybe not tonight, but look into it. Um, at this time, she's required to do site plan review. She's required to do site plan review unless the board waives it. If the board does not speak on it, or does not get back, does not waive it, she's required to do the site plan review. And ultimately, this is gonna end up in court, uh, is my assumption. Um, you know, and it would be a shame to have to use town council to spend thousands of dollars litigating this over two parking spaces, is my opinion. I've received a lot of complaints about this, actually myself, about can't we do anything to help her? From various concerned citizens that may or may not sit on boards. There's nothing I can do to help her besides request this waiver. Uh, and that's, that's what it is.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
My comments on this. I think it's in the interest of the community to require the site plan review. To make a waiver. Could result in a lot of. Legal concerns as to on what basis that was done. Any applicant. You go by the procedures, you go by the bylaws, they're there for a reason. And the purpose of a site plan review is for the town to be aware and knowledgeable of any changes or what's being proposed. And the opportunity to hear that and know that is from a site plan review. Um, whether people want it or not is not the point, it's required. And I personally. Would be very reluctant to issue a waiver. That I might have had an opportunity to look at something and prove it or, or make some kind of compromise or evaluate the merits of a situation. Uh, without a site plan review, those opportunities don't exist. And, um, so everybody's compelled to go by the zoning bylaws established by the town. And that was their intent. And I think it's our purview to adhere to that. So, um, there's nothing wrong with having a site plan review. And, um, and I think personally, I, I would have a problem with that.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, any other board member, please, have a comment?
I have a concern about the parking. I understand that the, you can't park, put a parking spaces behind the building, they could only be in the front of the building, is that correct?
I think it's probably her access there. Um, it is, it is an acre level lot.
Yeah, there, there's not a lot of parking, I don't believe the septic is in the front, but it is in the back. Um, you know, what, in that picture there, you're seeing a lot of unpermitted contractors. Right now, because she's refused to do the site plan review or apply for any other permits. I'm still going to have to take her to court for occupancy, most likely, on the building code end. Um, so I'm, I'm happy either way the board decides. Um, but I didn't want to, you know, I wanted to extend the opportunity to her. Show good faith that, you know, we deliberated on it, we thought about it. If the board decides that they don't want to do it, great, I'll move forward with finding her tomorrow morning.
So is there a cease and desist now?
Yes.
For her activity? Um, there's one thing to. It's very difficult because we have a lot of people who come, who, who want to get permits for what they do. Okay, they, they open up their business, they get a business certificate. They, they do what the town tells them to do in the order they tell them to do it. You can't just willy-nilly. Go to another property and open up a business and do business and think everything's gonna be hunky-dory. That's where we get, it's, we want to be business friendly. We want everybody to be treated the same. I think there's the septic issue here too. So, I mean, people before wanted, I've gotten calls. Were in an agreement to buy the property and could not afford the new septic system, so they backed out of the deal. And then, and they were opening something of a similar kind. So then when you have somebody else come in and they, they're just gonna go open their business there because they bought it. If, that is not fair, that is not what we're about.
I agree.
Agree.
And we as a board need to treat everyone the same. And our bylaws are our bylaws. Well, I mean, there are things that we should be doing that are outside of our bylaws, doing for the betterment of the community. God, Mike, your hand is up again. All right, Mike, go ahead.
You're having great deliberation, I don't mind if you guys want to finish. I, I just had, I, I had a comment on this, I just wanted to give my input, and I do have a letter, there's another letter in there from me about this issue. Um, but just touch on it.
I couldn't find that one, and we can go to that letter next, okay? So.
Okay, well, I, just, I can synthesize if you want, or you can come back to me, whatever works best.
Let me come back to you so that we can just finish the thoughts that are on the table right now. Um, so I think we're all after, what I'm saying is, I think we're all after the same thing, and that's due process for everyone. So Robert said it well, I know Carol. In other, in order for us or any of our bylaws to have any kind of substance and be treated. With respect, everyone needs to treat them with respect. I don't want to hear, oh, well, so-and-so got away with this, or they got away with that, but I'm recommending to people that they go through the process. So, no, if nothing else, this has to be made an example of that, no, this is not the way you do it. And you're not gonna, you know, throw your thumb up or your nose up at the town and say, I'm gonna do what I want to do. It's just, it's not fair to everyone else, it would just create chaos. So. I'm taking a chairman's privilege here.
Can I add something more?
Yes, Robert.
Um, I don't want the applicant to think that we're hostile towards them. Um, I think we are for encouraging businesses in our community. It's these processes that we can evaluate them. Try to assist every way we can, make suggestions for them. Um, what happens most frequently and more often than most people are aware, that people end up buying properties and renting properties without having the. Background information about what's required to operate a license or obtain a license from health departments, from planning boards, zoning boards. Uh, fire protection. I encounter these problems all the time, I have clients that have leased properties, assuming a sprinkling system was operational when it wasn't. Um, so I understand how people get in these decisions because they're very naive to all the things that have to be reviewed. And, uh, I sometimes I get a little angry because the real estate people that are involved with the sales or the leasing of this thing. Uh, I'm themselves not aware of what would be required for a particular use. Um, and so, uh, at best, they should be advising people to review, go to the town halls and then find out what the requirements are. In advance of signing a purchase and sales agreement, in advance of signing a lease. Um, so I think this board will do whatever we can to assist this person in this, in this situation. But we didn't create the situation and we, we really have to, I mean, we can provide whatever relief that we think is reasonable for them. But requiring, but requiring them, exempting them from due process on this stuff is, is not the approach to take.
Thank you, Robert. The only thing I can say to that, working in this market. People get so excited if their offer gets accepted. And no matter how much you tell people to read certain documents before they sign or buy or rent or whatever they're gonna do, they don't. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make drink. And this is, this happens with rentals, there's rules and regulations that go with condominiums, you should read 183A before you buy. Do they? No. And then they complain afterwards. So it's all about being knowledgeable about what you're doing. And unfortunately, we can't. We tell people to do it, but we can't make them do it. Um, where are we now on this? I think, I think the board is in agreement with, there will be a site plan review at minimal. And are we ready to go on to the next letter that Mike is gonna talk about? Same subject.
Yep, it's on the screen.
Uh, yeah, thank you, I will just kind of synthesize since you have this. Um, this letter goes through, it's just a thanks to Eric for doing all of this hard work and due diligence. Um, it talks about the interactions that I've had with this in particular individual coming in, of talking about the site. Um, she had come in and I provided documentation on originally information about what would be if there was any appeals to the building commissioner's letter, and I gave her the process for that. I gave her the process for an application. Um, if she wanted to do a site plan review, she left a, the start of an incomplete application. Uh, in the office, I called her back the next day and spoke with her at length and let her know about all the requirements. She asked for them in writing, and so I sent her an email with all the different requirements, including links to every regulation, so she could have all the information she wanted as she went forward in the process. That was on the 26th of April. Um, I think it's worth noting that she has not had any communication with myself since the 26th of April. Um, I have called her at least once a week since then, including today. Um, and she's not returning any phone calls or emails at this point. Um, to just speak kind of more to this process to help inform, I, I believe very strongly in helping support community members, navigate bylaws and regulations, and I'll always make time to be available and accessible to help people with questions and give people all the information they need to make informed decisions. At this point, the applicant is not. Um, making any engagement in the process. And is not in any way trying to find a pathway to work forward or looking for alternatives. In fact, this conversation we're having right now isn't actually coming from the applicant, this is Eric was coming forward and just making sure that, that the planning board had their, their time, that they could deliberate on this if they so wish, to make sure that they were included in the process. But I feel uncomfortable approving. A waiver of a site plan review on a site, in particular because the applicant isn't here, has had no, show no interest in being involved in the process. And has actually not submitted anything in any way about what the official use is going to be, aside from. Uh, you know, comments that she's made, it's gonna be similar to some other place that I had something else. So that's just my overall takeaway, and it's, it's all in the letter there, you can review it your own. So that's just my overall takeaway and it's all in the letter there. You can review at your own time, but yeah, my, my... I just wanted to express my concern about the idea of allowing this to move forward without site plan review.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Sue, your hand is up? Sue?
Is that a member of the board?
Oh, no. I, I thought her hand was... I'm, I'm trying to be very diligent. Yes, Sue?
It appears to be.
Laurie, I, I put my hand down. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just... I mean, I had to, I have to say something because you guys just added this to the agenda. It's like this total out of the blue. And that's fine if you want to say, you know, we have concerns. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, blah, 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 but to go ahead and just do it without the person whom you're speaking about even knowing that this is on the agenda. I just, I think it just goes beyond what you should do when you add something like that. I mean, you know, have a special meeting. You know, talk about it later, put it on the next agenda. Do something like that, but...
Okay.
I'm just thinking it's not fair and I just needed to speak up, that's all.
All right, Sue. Well, I, I don't think we want to not be fair. The letters were brought to our attention. It's under correspondence. Both people who wrote the letters are here. We appreciate their time and their explanations to us. And we've heard from the board members, we're not taking any vote tonight. We're not gonna... We're not taking any vote tonight. Right?
No.
I mean, there's...
Laurie.
You guys are going through your process.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can because you would have to consult with the Board of Selectmen and the, and the police. It was just more to be a notification. You wouldn't be able to waive it without their, without their comments. And to speak to Mrs. Lizzio's comments, this is, this would benefit her. It wouldn't hurt her, her having to do site plan review at the last location. According to her, it cost her $9,000 in all the application fees. So I really don't think she would be opposed to not having to spend all that money. That's probably why she's not doing it. But ultimately, like I said, this will end up in fees. It'll end up in court and it'll end up with me getting a subpoena to shut the place down completely and have her removed from the premises if she does not comply. And I don't think Townsend wants to deal with that, but that's what happens when you don't comply. So hopefully, when she gets the first fine, she'll snap out of it, come around. I mean, I could always waive the fines. But at the same time, I'm really looking for compliance and after speaking with Town Council, his suggestion was to begin fining immediately. Her 30-day appeal period is over. Her, your timeline that I gave her to apply for site plan review, which was two weeks since she had already moved into the space, I thought was more than gracious. So she's, she's at the point now where the enforcement's going to get, it's going to escalate. And that, there's nothing we can really do about that.
Okay.
So Laurie, this is, this is Kim Craven, if I could speak as, as a member of the TBA, not representing the TBA, but I just got to say, this seems really harsh and hostile. You know, as Sue mentioned, the, the person isn't even there. I'd like us to take a step back and maybe, maybe put something in registered mail, maybe ask for a meeting. If this person is a veterinarian, I'm sure many of you know, they are booked to the gills. I'm sure she's just trying to do her job during the day. Might be hard. Like, let's have a little bit of compassion and, and I don't, I don't know much of the situation. I'm just hearing what you're saying and it just seems really harsh, out of the box. I mean, if I were her and listening to this, I might be terrified of coming in front of you all.
So this is, the letters came to us, the board is discussing them. There have been many complaints to elected officials regarding the process that was not carried through. This is not against her personally. It's about the process that she just went ahead and did whatever she wanted to do, knowing, being a businessperson in town for, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 years, doing her business, she didn't know what her process was supposed to be and we're the bad guys?
Laurie, I, I would, I would tend to guess that many people in town don't know the process. Our website is not overly easy to use. I would say that I probably have more experience looking for things on the website because of my involvement with boards and committees than the average person. It's not easy. I've, I actually had to write the town clerk tonight because I couldn't find something that I know is out there, but I can't find it. And so being an established business in the town and moving location, someone may or may not know, but I, I just, I'm just a little bit taken back at, at the harshness of the comments of a towns person, a businessperson that's not even there. It just, it just sounds a little bit off, Laurie, is all I'm saying.
If you're in business, I'll tell you, the first person you go see is the town clerk. Robert, you're next. Robert?
I have, we have to support our building inspector. He's the one that has enforced these laws. So he's come to us for advice and direction. He showed us both the pros and cons of what he sees can happen here. So, of the one that I have seen that's participated in this discussion has made a diligent effort to try to get the, this person to perform conventionally the way we would expect them. And the applicant is not responding. And that's compelling the building inspector to enforce it now. Which none of us want to see happen. But this is not a problem and it's not hostile towards any particular applicant or business. It's the way we conduct business in this town. And everybody is doing their job. Mike has tried to help them. Eric has tried to help them. So, so let me, I think the town as a community wants to help this applicant. However, so I don't view this as hostile at all. But again, all of us have responsibilities and obligations and we have to do the best we can to, to protect all the citizens in this town and do what they expect us to do. So I commend everybody here. I, myself have compassion for these people. I deal with these clients all the time. But there's things that have to be done and there's things that you cannot prevent. And so I, I think the board is in the right, on the right direction here. I think we got to give Eric the support he needs. We want to thank everybody that's participated in here that's tried to assist this situation, to avoid it from being what it is now and why it's become so imperative. The fact that this applicant hasn't appeared today is very apparent. The reason is that this came as a crisis situation for the building department. They have to start implementing fines. So now, the applicant's been aware of this for some time. Also went through this in her previous location. So I have a hard time understanding that she, he or she was that naive about what they were doing. So other than that, they're asking for an extreme mercy and, and waiver from things that we just cannot provide. And that's, I'm sorry, that's really how I see that and I do want to support everybody here. I, I have a consensus. We all want to help her. But, but there's only so much we can do and by helping her, telling her what she's got to do. And that's where it is and whatever her personal situation is or financial situation, we can't help that. She got there because she got there on her own. So all we can do is try to remedy the problem the best we can. So I want to show my gratitude for all your support with that thought.
Well, thanks for the kind words, Bob. You know, and thank, thank you for the planning board for the support. I mean, I was the first one over there, 9:00 AM in the morning after Friday hearing that she had moved. I, I actually told her, I'm happy for you. I'm glad that she found that space. I think it'll be a good use of the space. But you do have to square up with the town. There's not much we can do about that and I'm more than happy to help her as best I can, but I will steal a line from Laura. You can bring a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. She needs to help herself at this point. And we will be more than happy to help her. You know, she's had some other experiences. All of the players have changed. You know, and I did, I told her, I said, I'm really happy you found the spot. It's going to save you $50,000 in sprinklers. You know, and I hope you can get it done. Parking's a little tough over there. She's got a couple of issues. But, and she's going to have to upgrade the tank is my understanding. But after that, she'll be good. Once you're done, you're done. You don't have to deal with us again. Get your business going and get the people in there safely is one of my concerns. There's no accessibility. And the fact that it was a single-family home, it's not set up as a veterinary clinic at this time. So I was, I was really just a last ditch effort to, to reinforce the fact that she'd need site plan review. I asked the board to waive it. The board came back and said, no, thank you. So at this point, you certainly have to do it. I had already noticed, determined that based on our bylaws. So I think I'm all set. Thank you very much for having me and, and looking into this and look forward to seeing you guys next time.
The only thing I can suggest is that if she comes before us, there may be an avenue to give her a temporary use until some of these things are resolved with some kind of time limit. I mean, that would be the best that the community could do for her. But again, it just can't be automatically or assumed. And she has to come before us. We understand. We can understand the hardship and we can try to work with people to get through it and delay things from happening, but it appears her nonresponsiveness is catapulted you right in this situation. And so, so I don't know what you want to suggest to her, but maybe that's...
Like I said, I'm, I'm hopeful and I hope she comes in and applies as soon as possible. She only has to do the site plan review at this point. It's a use that's permitted. So there's that. So there was a lot of advantages in her taking that space, but moving hastily, you know, like I said, without the approvals, it, it's, you know, we can't allow it. And I'm glad that you guys feel the same way. It makes my job a lot easier to say, hey, you know, you know, I'm not the only one that thinks this. You know, I'm not standing on a lonely island by myself. The bylaws require it and I've spoken to various people and they, they agree with me. And I did try to help you by asking for a waiver. It did not go. So now we're, we're here where we're here. Like I said, I'm very hopeful. I'm hoping that she comes in tomorrow and applies to the site plan review and we can go from there or as soon as possible. You know, no one wants to see her not be able to operate. Nobody wants to go over there and shut that business down. Nobody wants to go to the court system, not me at least. That's worst case scenario for everyone. So hopefully the, you know, we'll, we'll get her going and she'll get in there and you know, I'm glad that you guys were able to hear it and soon enough you'll be able to discuss it with her yourselves.
Okay, thank you all. I see some hands up. Mike, Brascow?
Yeah, Laurie, I just want to say, because there's a lot of comments about the hostility and everything. I'm in favor of the site plan. From my understanding, these letters came in and we're, we were just trying to see, I believe Eric was trying to just get a waiver in support of her, not, not trying to be hostile at all.
Exactly.
Wanted to make that comment, like this, this is, you know, she doesn't have to be here for this. That's my understanding. You know, this was done in her favor. I'm in favor of a site plan review only because if anyone follows Townsend, what's going on on Facebook, that whole area is a nightmare for traffic complaints and everything like that. And the, I think the community really would want a site plan and because there's so many entrances and exits and there's a lot of car accidents right at Hannaford as well too. So that's why I'm in favor of a site plan review. I think, you know, you know, my comments on here as well too with the, the regards to the fines, I'm hoping that gets her to respond to you guys. I'm hoping that you guys can come to some resolution because I'm very pro-business. You know, Townsend needs more business to help with the taxes and the tax revenue in this town to hopefully eventually get to a split tax rate or something like that. And help the homeowners out and make the town a little bit more affordable to live in. So yeah, I really, I do commend you for coming to us to try to help her out prior to it. I hope that there can be some kind of resolution so she can keep her business going with minimal downtime and minimal fines.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Crowley, your hand is up?
I just wanted to reiterate, I am very happy to work with anyone. I would love it if she came in and I'd be, I'd love to support her in the process and when we spoke last, she talked about how much she was grateful for the fact that I had been helping her and giving her all the information when it, when, at the time. If she showed up tomorrow, I'm more than happy to do that. I don't particularly... I would love to see a way that her business can succeed, honestly. When it comes right down to it, you know, it's a business in town and it's a local person and I have no reason to think that I would not want it to succeed. I just, it's difficult when she's not reaching out to us to figure out how best to serve her. So if she wanted to show up and talk to us more, I mean, I'm more than happy to be innovative with her and trying to find out ways and making sure that every applicable opportunity she has is provided to her. And so if she sees this or anyone here happens to speak with her, please extend. I would love to talk to her. I called her, I've been calling her multiple times. I've called her even today asking to speak with her and she just hasn't gotten back to me. There's only so much I can do to help someone who's not letting me help. But I do genuinely want to help in figuring out things going forward.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I think that we see a theme throughout everyone here. And the addition to that is that we need to treat everyone the same. So all the businesses have to follow the same bylaws like everyone else and one should not be treated any differently than the other. So I thank you all for your participation in that. And next on the agenda is the 4.2 Stormwater Permit Inspection Reports, other related correspondence. Is that you, Mike?
Yeah, I have that actually. The, I just kind of update the board on what has come in for stormwater management reports and just to update Robert, the town, we currently have two active stormwater management permits. One of them is 22 West Meadow Road. It is the Solar Array. The property is operated and owned by Nexamp and we have received two checklists and two annual inspection checklists as part of the process. Once construction is complete, the, the owner of the stormwater infrastructure is required to provide the town with the annual inspection checklist at six months and again at one year. We just received those for the project. We also went out and just to update you on that, we, municipal staff did go out and we completed a municipal checklist to issue a certi, what we call a certificate of completion. The certificate of completion will be issued to Lockbrook Solar Array or Nexamp. And basically what that is, is it's basically that they are in compliance, that all the systems and infrastructure is working properly. Everything has been maintained properly and built according to plan. So staff has been spending a good amount of time reviewing the as-built. We've been on the site. Jim Smith from the Highway Department was out there, Mike and myself. We met with Nexamp, a representative from Nexamp, and we looked over the entire stormwater infrastructure. And everything appears to be in order and looks good. So in your packets, I've already, I've also put that that inspection checklist, so you can review that on your own time. And at this point, I believe, in my opinion, it would be appropriate to go ahead and issue that certificate of completion for the project. If you guys would like to vote on that, I can continue and process that. Or if you would like to review any of the materials before you do that, that's fine. You can act on that in another meeting.
Is there a timeline with this, please?
Nope. The certificate of completion can be anytime you're satisfied with the results that we've collected. There are ongoing conditions for this stormwater permit. that we've collected. There are ongoing conditions for this stormwater permit, so that is, the applicant understands what they are, and there is an operation and maintenance manual that accompanies the project that is recorded. So there will be ongoing responsibilities for the stormwater infrastructure going forward.
Okay.
I have just a couple of questions. The project is ready for completion.
The stormwater management, this is a stormwater management permit, that's only a part of the project, yeah.
That's only that component, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's been monitored by site engineers?
It's been, the construction was all monitored by engineers, but not hired by the town. This has all been, yeah, but that
They've all certified and stamped it and certified it for completion?
The as-built that we received have been certified.
And stamped and stamped.
Yeah, provided by the
Well, we can rely on that, I would imagine.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Then I would say, I don't see any reason to delay not proceeding with it.
Thank you, Robert. Other members of the board, please?
I'm okay going.
Carol? Carol, I'm sorry.
I said I'm okay going forward if we want to vote on it tonight.
Michael?
I'm okay moving forward, too.
Okay, Ian?
Yeah, I'm okay, too.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the
Certificate of Completion.
Excuse me?
For the stormwater.
For the stormwater management permit. Construction.
And that's the 22 West Meadow Road?
Yep, that's a Lock Brook Solar Array, and the owner is Nexamp.
Okay. And so, do I have a motion to approve the certificate of completion for 22 West Meadow Road for the stormwater permit?
I shall move.
That was Robert. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mike Carroll, any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Ian O'Dea says yes.
Mike Brasco, yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. It's unanimous.
Thank you, everyone, for that vote. Have a good night.
You, too.
Bye.
Beth, is there, was there another one? You said there were two?
Yeah, so the other project that's currently underway is at Three Wheeler Road. Rob, if you'd like, I can provide some background information on that. It's an earth excavation permit, and the project has been going on since 2017, and obviously in phases. And the stormwater management permit, they provide monthly inspection reports, and they provide rainfall. It's, you know, it's basically, you can look at the report in the file. They would, you know, fill in any work that they've done on the system, if they had to replace soap fencing and that sort of thing, if any, the functioning of the basins. So that's ongoing.
I'm familiar with those.
Okay, so that's an ongoing project, yeah. And that's all we have right now for stormwater. Thank you.
Okay, so there's no vote required on that one. It was just a report.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. 4.3 Letter to the Townsend Planning Board from David Kompu regarding 61B designation. Please advise.
Okay. Did, all right, maybe if Mike wouldn't mind, would you mind taking this, Mike? Mike Crowley, would you mind discussing this one?
I'm happy to just talk a little bit about, yeah, if that works for everybody. So this was a letter that was received. It went to several different committees and departments in town regarding a property that is in 61B. If people, I don't know how familiar people are with Chapter 61 properties, Beth's pulling something up, and I'll wait till it's up so I can read it off to y'all, so you can all see what I'm talking about. This is a property that was at 66 Beavory Road that was under Chapter 61B designation. Chapter 61B is a designation of an agreement for recreation under the Chapter 61 rights. When a property is removed from the recreational status or any of the chapter statuses, they are required to notify the town. Typically, the town has something called the right of first refusal. Basically, if they're getting removed to sell the property, the town has the option to buy the property. If the town is getting removed not to sell, there is still an ability for the town to act, to intercede. We're still delineating, given the way that this has been removed and the new proposed use, whether or not the town actually has a right of first refusal at this point. We're working with Town Council on that just to verify, because there's little nuances of situations where there is no right of refusal to town. So we're just verifying, make sure we have everything. Again, I don't know how familiar the planning board is with Chapter 61 properties, the Chapter 61, Chapter 61A, and Chapter 61B. And I'm actually happy to come at a later point. I'm preparing a briefing for our open space committee that Carol will get to see that includes a kind of broad overview of chapter properties and what that means versus conservation restrictions and other types of restrictions on properties that property owners can pursue. I'm happy to come and talk about that, if that helps to kind of brief everybody and give everybody some background information on this and other types of things that you might hear about. But this is just kind of, at this point, it's being removed, and so it needs to be made aware for the board.
So they're removing their 61B. So I'll just say briefly that the 61 chapters help owners save tax dollars by putting into like forestry or, you know, stuff like that. When they remove, and I think it's just for 10 acres or more, 10-acre minimum? There is a five-acre minimum. Okay. So usually, it means they're going to be selling off or something like that, you know, maybe in the near future, because when they do sell, I think the back taxes that are paid are up to seven years?
I believe five.
Five?
If I can verify that.
Yeah, okay. So those are like questions, and it brings to mind a question of a statistic that maybe you could get for your presentations, and that would be is, how many acres in Townsend are in 61s?
Sure, I could tell you that right now if you'd like.
Oh, that would be awesome. I like learning something new every day.
All right, let's see, open space. So we're still revising. There's a few properties that are of interesting note, but, let's see, Brown put down on there. Here we are. Let's get a nice little total. Because I have a spreadsheet which has the acreage on it. In Townsend, at current, there are 2,919 acres under Chapter 61.
Okay, and those are owners. See, owners
Yeah, so Chapter 61 land is something that a private owner can pursue where they place a certain amount of use restrictions and designated use on acreages of the property. In doing so, they pay less tax rate because the property is not taxed as buildable, because it is outlined with that designated use. They get to decide what it is. They have an annual reporting requirement. In order to maintain that designation, if they don't report, they don't get the tax benefit. And it is usually a commitment of at least five to 10 years, depending on the type and the use. And, but they can, because they're the owners of the property, choose to come out of it. But if they do choose to come out of it, they have to pay the back taxes for the property, because they basically reinstated the use, and it actually dates back a few years. So
But not for the whole time.
Not for the whole thing. So if you have it for 60 years and you back out, you only have to pay for like five.
Right. So having that number of over 2,000 acres, what, two other questions. What is the total acreage in the town of Townsend? And what is, then the other question is, of that total acreage, how many acres are owned by the state and the town?
Okay, ooh, I like this. This is all, this is actually all going in the briefing. So yes, let's see what we've got here. Town and land. I don't have all of the information for owned by the town. I only have the town-owned land that falls under the normal designation of what would be open space, like conservation land, water, recreational land, things like that. I don't, for example, I don't have data on like the size of the town hall building property. That's not included in my list. I can give you the open space numbers, where I could work with the assessor to get the full amount of numbers of things owned by the town.
We can use that open space number. That's okay. And then you can get the other number. I'm just saying, as you do this chart, and as you're discussing it with different boards or whoever, and also, we are videoed here, and we will, people will be able to play this back, and they may be gaining some information about the town.
Yeah, I would be delighted. In fact, like I mentioned, I'm preparing kind of an informational orientation for the Open Space Committee, which will be recorded, which is kind of, I'm calling it the State of the Land, and it's just an idea of all the different types of property and open space in town and doing that. And I'd be happy to come and offer it here. I was even going to offer it to the Board of Selectmen at some points, because we have a new Board of Selectmen that we're adding, Town Administration is coming online, just kind of talking about what my office is, what we do, and here's some of the things we're doing in town. So I could offer that as a presentation, maybe rather than throwing random numbers at you in the middle of this, and include some of the things you'd like to see in that, for sure, as well as a few other things that might come up that we relevant in the office. So it's up to you to consider, but that hopefully gives you some background on this particular letter that you've received.
Okay. Thank you. I like none of those numbers. Did you get any of the numbers? Did you get any of the other two?
Oh, yes. So town, what I would qualify as open space in town, AKA owned by, say, water, cemetery, parks, conscom. We have 816 acres. And state-owned land, I'm still putting that together. That's a little harder to get. I've been working with the assessor on that, because there are so many different parcels that are owned by the state, because there's DCR, there's Mass Fish and Wildlife, so I'm putting those together. And, oh, overall acreage of the town, that was the one you asked for.
Google probably has that, but
I am on Google right now.
What do I know? See, our meeting should be educational.
Uh, let's see. Oh, that's right. It's 33.13 square miles, which is
That I knew.
You know, I probably actually have this on the presentation if I put that up. I pulled that up. I want to get it faster, but we are learning together.
I know that one-third of it, one-third of the square miles is state-owned or town-owned.
Yes, I can tell you that statistic, that about 33% of the town is owned by the state. And then properties that are in open space bring that total over 50%. So over 50% of Townsend is under one form of open space protection or another. It's a lot of it going on in town.
So we certainly are not densely populated.
Here we are. So according to Google, thank you, Google, we have 21,000 acres, just over 21,000 acres in town, square acres in Townsend, or acres in Townsend. And what did I say before? The statistic was for town and land was 800 of those 21,000. And then
That was your open space.
That was my open space.
And the 2,000
The town-owned land, and the town, the town open space was 2,2,900 of 2,100, so like 15% math hard. It's late at night. Ballpark 15%. More to come on a presentation, if you so wish. I promise.
So much. So always good to have these little tidbits come out. Okay, where are we? Where's my agenda? Oh, because I'm writing all over it, that's why. 4.4 Letter to Local Officials from Department of Housing and Community Development regarding subsidized housing inventory annual update. I didn't, Beth, do you have that? Beth? Did I lose Beth? Maybe I did. Okay, well, that's, that was the last thing on my agenda, and I, I'm going to think that it was in our portal to review. Beth?
Yep.
The 4.4 is our last item.
Okay.
Can you put that up on the screen? That was a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yep.
Regarding our housing inventory update.
Sure.
All right. Get it. Such a relief, it's all. Not cooperating here. Okay, there you go.
So I don't know if there are any action items for staff, if you've had a chance to review this?
I have not had a chance to review this. I do see a June 4th, 22 date. They asked that this be put back on the next agenda, and that everybody on the board read this letter. If you have any questions, get to Beth before the next meeting, so that hopefully we can have answers for you. Jazz, do you know anything about this?
I do.
Oh, do you want to tell us what you know?
I could address it as a state representative to the Housing Authority, if you'd like.
I would love that.
This is a request from DHCD to verify the, what we have on our inventory, our housing inventory. This is something that the Housing Authority has been looking for notifications for in the past, that we have, formally, the Housing Authority has not seen this, and it's been, I don't know what department has been getting it or how it's been doing it. But as I'm looking through it, I'm actually kind of glad that we're finally seeing this after eight years. The process really should go from the clerk to the Housing Authority, then to, the Housing Authority should fill in for what they have on the Housing Authority list, and then it needs to be passed by the planning board and/or zoning, or both, however you guys want to do that, and then resubmit it back to the clerk to report. And then the clerk has a portal, Beth, I believe, the state portal, that she would log into, and then put the official data in.
So it's the town clerk who submits the data to the state?
Yeah, I think, I think the town clerk is the one that has the access to the actual portal to submit the information. But the process should be that the Housing Authority is, because the Housing Authority, and actually, Beth, I know that all that information I know that all that information from the housing authority is in the new housing production plan.
Yep, so this year will be very easy because the clerk will be able to just pull that number in. Because I know that during the formulation of that document, we had, uh, all the records from the ZBA and, uh, went into helping provide data for that. So we're up to date and it should be really easy this year.
Yep, I agree. And then the, the only up-to-date stuff would be just to verify again with the building commissioner before it gets, um, you know, passed by the, the different boards. Because there may be an application that, that wasn't caught during the housing production questionnaire, period.
Okay, so i- in the, so in this case, in this report, it's gonna be lower than it was in the past? Because this is the affordable housing units, right?
Yes, and it needs to be updated twice a year.
Okay, so-
We'll get another one of these letters in December.
Okay, um, and as state, I'm gonna ask the question as state rep for the housing authority. We are still at a point where we can't, um, we can't convert current housing into affordable housing, even though it's affordable housing, well, quote unquote, by the standards of, um, what the pricing would be, you know, values would be.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so just like off the cuff, what do you think about, um, do you think we could get those new rental units, um, into 41 Main Street to be, um, accepted as affordable housing units?
Um, I, I would suggest, Madam Chair, that we, as a, as a community, talk, talk with DHCD. Um, there are a couple of representatives that, uh, might be able to assist with that. And I think the housing authority could initiate that conversation.
And it says right here, you, and this line here, you know, there's, there's a way to, uh, new, to ensure units will be newly added or restored. So there is, there is verbiage in this letter that we can pursue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You think Courtney should be the one to, Courtney is chair of housing, should be the one to reach out?
Or Beth.
Or Beth.
Or Jody.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That, I meant Jody.
Jody.
So I'll make sure that just gets forwarded to Jody, just in case. She, I think I already did, but I'll make sure that Jody has this.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've been updating Jody on the individuals to get in contact with because now that we have the housing, the Affordable Housing Trust, um, we need to engage, re-engage with the Department of Housing and Community Developments with our representative to help us to move forward now that we have the housing production plan. But this is all the zoning and the planning and the housing authority all need to be working in conjunction with them.
Right, right.
Collaboration, like I've been telling you.
Collaboration, all for the same goal, so, right. Uh, does anyone else have anything to bring before the meeting this evening? I have nothing else on the agenda. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:28 PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:28 PM.
And is there a second?
I said an emotion.
Ian, thank you. And is, uh, any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, I'll entertain a roll call vote.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Barosko, yes.
Robert.
Robert Darian, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you all very much tonight for your participation. Thank you to Sam.